Welcome to the June 11th, 2019 regular meeting of the Troy Planning Commission. Copies of the agenda for tonight's meeting are available at the entrance of the room. Additionally, the agendas and minutes of prior meetings are available on the city's website. The meeting will be conducted in accordance with the agenda as presented or amended by the Planning Commission. The roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission are outlined on the reverse side of tonight's agenda. State law establishes planning commissions. The Planning Commission is comprised of nine members, all of whom have volunteered to serve. Members are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. The other individuals seated at the dais or starts the table today this evening are representatives of the city's planning department, the city's attorney's office, and the city's planning consultant, Carlisle Wardman Associates. If you wish to address the Planning Commission, please come forward when recognized and provide your name and address on the sign-in sheet. Please begin your remarks by stating your name for the benefit of the commissioners. All remarks are to be addressed to the Planning Commission, not to anyone else in the room. At this time, I'd like to ask that everyone turn off their cell phones or put them on silent mode or any other devices that may disrupt this meeting. Please, yeah, I said that. Go call the sign again, please.
Mr. Apidian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Faison? Ms. Fowler?
Here.
Mr. Hudson? Mr. Krent?
Here.
Mr. Lambert?
Here.
Mr. Rahmon?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
The next item is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda? Both went at the same time.
Second.
Okay. Mr. Rahmon and then seconded by Mr. Lambert. Go call.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Rahmon?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Apidian?
Yes.
Okay, and now to approve the minutes for the last meeting. Moved by Mr. Apidian, seconded by Mr. Tagle.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Krent?
abstain.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Rahmon?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Ms. Apidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
The next item is public comment for items not on today's agenda. Are there any, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on an item not on today's agenda? Seeing none, move on to the next item, which is number five. Is Mr. Carlisle going to give us the...
Yes, do you want to read it into the record?
Oh, sure, yeah, I'll read it in the record. Item number five is file number, this is a preliminary public hearing, I'm sorry, yeah, public hearing, special use, and preliminary site plan review, file number SU 2019-0014, proposed Panera restaurant with drive-through, north side of 14 mile road, west of John R. at 390 West 14 Mile, section 35, zone GB.
Thank you, good evening. Tonight in front of you is a proposed application for a new Panera located as an outlet of Oakland Mall. It's approximately an acre parcel. The applicant proposes to develop a one-story structure, approximately 4,300 square feet with a drive-through. The drive-through is permitted with a special land use permit in the general business district. As for zoning, the site, as noted, is within the Oakland Mall area. It's zone GB, surrounded by GB to the north, to the east, to the west, and across 14 Mile. It's also commercial land uses across the right-of-way. With regards to building orientation, the site is outlined in red. The proposed building is located in the southeast corner of the site. Existing access will be opted to existing curb cuts that are actually located in the internal drive for Oakland Mall. The drive-through is located at this eastern side of the, sorry, the west side of the building, and the drive-through stacking area is again is the west side of the property line and then pulls in front of the building and out. And parking is located in the rear and the side of the site and the building. We do note that the building itself does comply with all of the GB bulk requirements. With regards to parking, the applicant has provided the required 48 spaces as required by ordinance. They've also included bicycle parking. We do know that they are seeking a waiver for loading space, required by ordinance is a loading space, and they are seeking a waiver for that from the Planning Commission. That request has been considered and granted by the Planning Commission in the past. In addition, we do have a question about where the applicant would store any snow. The site is very tight, and so we do ask that they provide some information to the planning commission about where they prepare, propose to store snow. With regards to landscaping, we do know that the site actually exceeds the number of trees on site. However, we do know that the required greenbelt trees, which are the trees that are located adjacent to 14 Mile, have been relocated to different locations on the site. And the reason, partially for that, is the proposed sidewalk here that runs in front, and there's just not enough room simply to put those trees in. So they're seeking a waiver to actually put four of those required trees in different locations on the site. In terms of trash enclosure, the dumpster is located at the northwest corner of the site. They're providing one trash enclosure. We do note that other than landscaping, it does not appear or the plans do not indicate any screening of that trash enclosure, so we are asking the applicant to clarify what that proposed screening is going to be. In addition, we do know that there's concern, engineering raised it as well as we did, is that if these doors are open, it does drop, it does block drive aisle access both along the frontage road as well as within the parking lot. So we are considering the requirement that they actually put those self-hinging, self-closing hinging on the gates to ensure that those gates do remain closed. We do also know that the applicant has proposed a sidewalk that actually runs parallel and adjacent to the proposed drive-through stacking area. It's rare for a planner to recommend the removal of a sidewalk, but we really don't see the purpose of this sidewalk because there is an internal pedestrian sidewalk that actually runs, bisects the parking lot. And in fact, we are concerned this may actually create more conflicts to have this sidewalk in here because it kind of dead ends to nowhere. So we're actually asking that they actually remove that sidewalk and put just grass or additional landscaping within that location. The applicant has proposed lighting, proposing nine light fixtures. They do meet the photometric requirements of the ordinance. However, they did not provide any fixture details to confirm that they meet the dark sky requirements. In addition, there's a requirement to the ordinance that lights either need to be dimmed or turned off between 11:00 PM and sunrise, and so there should be a note or indication from the applicant that they're able to do that. The applicant has proposed the following elevations. This is the parking lot elevation. The primary building material is masonry base, and this is all EFS on the northern section. This is the elevation that be fronting the parking lot and the elevation internal Oakland Mall. We have a concern about this elevation, this is the east eleva, I'm sorry, this is not a concern, the elevation we have. This is the elevation that actually faces the interior drive of Oakland Mall, and again, EFS with the band of masonry. The primary concern elevation we have is this elevation. This is the south elevation. This is the elevation actually fronting on 14 Mile. As you can see, there's very little articulation, there's no transparency, and it's a rather blank stark wall fronting on 14 Mile. So again, we are asking the applicant to consider revisions to this to soften up this elevation. And lastly, this is the side elevation of the actual drive-through, the drive-through window you can see in this location. So we are asking consideration of replacement of the EFS with another material and revise this elevation on 14 Mile. These are proposed perspectives. This perspective in the corner here, this is kind of looking in from 14 Mile of the building. This is the elevation, this is the perspective of the drive-through from the kind of back corner of the site. This is the elevation of 14 Mile looking the other way, and this is the elevation looking at the, from the rear side of the building. This is a special use. We look at issues of compatibility adjacent uses, compatibility with master plan, potential traffic impact, impact on public services, compliance with zoning ordinance, impact on environment, et cetera. We do find that we, that we do feel the special use standards haven't met. We do not have concern with the particular drive-through itself. However, we do have some concerns, obviously, with the site plan as noted, and particularly elevations. But in terms of special use standards, we find it does meet the special use standards. As part of the deliberation, the planning commission is asked to consider the applicant's ability to accommodate snow removal, consider the waiver of loading space, and lastly, consider the waiver to provide greenbelt planning in alternative locations. However, we are postponing, we are recommending a postponed action to allow the applicant to resubmit a plan set addressing the items in report, specifically those of elevations. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? And I'd like the applicant to come up and show us the progress.
They use the microphone or?
Yes, please. Yeah, it's every corner to...
Okay. I don't have a laser pointer, so I can't really walk around the seat.
You want one?
That could dangerous. This is the red button, tell me whatever elevation I'm... I'll go to the site plan first if you don't mind. Okay. So I just kind of wanted to talk through the sidewalk you were talking about, that dead ends actually are our service door. It's really created for a safe path for our employees to be able to take trash from that back door instead of having to go through the dining area and the front doors, so that they have a safe path to get up to the dumpster from that back service door. So that's really what that sidewalk is for, you know, the pedestrian access throughout the parking lot and access for any cross parking from the mall is in place, but that's really what that west side sidewalk is, is in place to manage. In regard, I guess I had a question on the self-closing hinges for the dumpster. That's not something we've ever done before, and I understand the concern, so I don't know if you guys have other concepts that have done that before that we could get a spec? That would, you know, I don't have a problem doing that, we just need to understand what you guys are looking for in that regard. I think Greg Petrow will get through with the, the snow location here.
Yeah, Greg Petrow, I'm with the Keps. So for snow storage, we have a couple extra spaces on the site as far as parking. Have a...
Push the red button.
If you want me to talk about the snow, can you do that?
You want it.
Call a surprise witness to the stand.
I am Peter Light, I'm the general manager of Oakland Mall. Anyhow, snow on sites like this, you have Starbucks and the other ones that are there. We actually put it out into the non-used areas of the parking lot in the drainage, and it melts off there, so it wouldn't be on-site and wouldn't be taking up parking spaces. Hopefully that answers that question. Okay, thank you.
Now, if you don't mind going to the elevation, especially the one in question. So yeah, this is entirely back of house, so I understand that the request, and this is because we're putting our back of house so that we can have the front facing the parking field. I understand this is really what's facing the main road, so we can absolutely address, you know, the material changes, add, you know, whether it's spandrel or some additional painting and awnings, canopies, whatever, just to kind of dress that up and make it more of an architecturally pleasing, visually pleasing elevation, especially, again, as that's going to be most visible from 14 Mile road. So no concerns with updating that and getting those revised for the next submission.
And as far as, can we go back to the site plan with landscape? Okay. I think Mr. Carlisle pointed out, I mean, the whole, we had to put an eight-foot walk at the south end of that building, so that's kind of why we moved some of the landscape around. This site currently, I don't think it has any trees, you know, any green area, so I think it's a nice improvement that we're adding quite a few trees to this site.
We're here to answer any additional questions you guys may have.
Any questions for the applicant?
We're on the south side that faces 14 Mile. Those are utility boxes, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
They're on site, so are you going to do something to cover those utility boxes?
We do a track screen, very similar to trek boards that are used for patios, and so there'll be steel beam-mounted trek screen that will block the utilities from the, from visibility from the street.
And just as a curiosity, there already is a Panera on the east side of John R. on 14 Mile.
Yes.
What are you going to do with that?
The lease for that location actually expires in January.
So that'll be gone.
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Just, it works like the way you're focusing the Paneras is inward toward the mall rather than onto 14 Mile. Is that from a marketing perspective, you think that's the best way you want to get customers in there or?
It was really kind of twofold, in that that's how it really fit best to have the parking and then potential cross parking with the mall, and also to have the building line up with kind of the buildings that are already along 14 Mile road, as opposed to just having the front door and then all of the parking completely behind us.
Mr. Tagle?
Your building floor plan actually represents the building with your prominent facade entrance on the south side of the building, so you might want to adjust that when you resubmit your elevations.
Okay.
Because when I looked at the site plan, I thought, or excuse me, the floor plan, it's oriented correctly so that the glass in the entrance is on the south side.
Okay.
So, and do you feel you have enough room between the curve of the building to actually enclose your incoming switchgear?
Yes. And you can go back to the site plan. It really is just a screen wall. It's not anything that's really built out. Not shown or shown on there. Yes, Greg, do you?
Again, that's not a pedestrian path, so it doesn't need to be ADA clear, it's just a sidewalk for trash.
Well, you understand DT has clearance requirements for that switchgear, safety requirements, so...
Right, it's usually about three foot on all side.
Well, three foot in front of it, so if something was to happen, somebody would be pushed into an open box or...
Right.
So I guess I'm just asking, do you feel you have enough clearance in there to put that and to make, have the clearance remaining for, you know, DT or...
I believe we do, without having the measurements in front of me and the dimensions, I can't say that with absolute certainty. And if need be, we can put the switchgear on...
Is there a possibility of moving that switchgear to the east side?
Right, and that's what I was actually going to just try to get to, you know, we have a lot of landscaping against the building there that it could probably just rotate around.
Yeah, I mean, if there is, I think we'd all be much happier with it kind of, because that's probably your least prominent elevation.
Sure.
And there are some, you know, the building goes in and out, you can kind of screen it, you know, with the shape of the building.
Okay.
Any other comments?
So as you were contemplating that south elevation that runs along 14 Mile Road, and let's just call it dressing it up a little bit for the 14 Mile road traffic, were you considering eliminating the prominent use of EFS and replacing that with another material?
Yes, but I'm not on the design team, unfortunately, so they would be making that decision. We do have some all brick, we do have some that are brick and stone, some that are, you know, the brick Wayne Scott goes up to about the window ledge, and then it's, you know, it's like an EFS band that a lot of businesses up and down 14 Mile currently have. So it would really be up to our design team to take a look at that and really kind of come up with their own, you know, Panera-approved approach to that.
Have you taken a moment to familiarize yourself with our design standard ordinances?
Yes.
And our revising of those ordinances so that we minimize the use of EFS on projects in the city?
Sure, and we just opened one on Crooks Road that we did do a very similar thing to what I'm saying, where we raised the brick ledge up considerably up to the top of the windowsill, and it was just the EFS banding around the front for the signage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other thoughts? I've got, oh, go ahead.
Just a quick question to Mr. Carlisle. Is there any transparency requirement on that elevation, like, like we have for Big Beaver?
No, there's no, there's no transparency requirement. There are design standards, and, you know, our opinion is this clearly does not meet those design standards, but there's not a specific transparency requirement on it. We did, the applicant explained these concerns and explained how we really are going to treat this almost like a four-sided building in terms of architectural quality, and I apologize because I misread the elevations. I thought the parking lot elevation was actually the elevation fronting 14 Mile, and I thought this was the backside. So I apologize for misreading, so that's why we do have some concern about that elevation that's fronting 14 Mile because it doesn't meet the design standards at, in our opinion.
Looks really like, you know, it's not meeting the requirement, so maybe some transparency would be very, very helpful, you know, the way I see it. And then there is a marketing side also here. If I look at this elevation, I will not go to Panera, I go there quite often, because, you know, it doesn't attract me visually to go and hit my unsaid, because, you know, I understand that there are some other requirements, that parking lot requirements, but you can have both sides, you know, some glass, some transparency, so that it can be, it can satisfy both needs.
We did have conversations about having some sort of outdoor seating that actually fronts on, you know, it's out there on the side of 14 Mile, et cetera. We did give some options for them to consider, and then this is what was submitted, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What there, the second picture on the bottom, there's a gated area right there, you see? Is that outdoor seating or is it...
It is, yeah. Yeah, that's a bollard railing system to protect the patio seating.
Go ahead, John.
Ben, could you tell us your, one of your comments about removing the bumper blocks? Tell us a little bit about what that, the thought I had.
Hard to see any on the site plan, but I don't know, my thing, there are...
I can tell where they're at. They're...
They're right near us.
They're right, they're right on this.
Engineering, actually, that was a request of engineering. They note that that, there is a curb there, so there's no need for bumper blocks. They prefer not to have bumper blocks if there's no curb, if there is a curb.
Is it, is it going to keep the cars overhang off of the sidewalk?
Well, they're on a seven-foot wide, seven-foot wide sidewalk, so there a lot of overhang. So engineering does, just prefers not to have the bumper blocks if there's already a curb proposed there anyways, and they, so they've actually made that recommendation.
And that's usually those spots against the...
The only places they show bumper blocks on the, on the elevation, on the site plan.
Yeah, that was my thought too, John. What Ben told me earlier was that they allow for two-foot overhang, so we got a five-foot sidewalk effectively.
Right.
But there are some pickup trucks, if they backed into it, it would be four foot with a trailer hitch, would be somebody that'd break their knee. I just, I, I mean, they're meeting all the requirements with or without the bumper blocks. I would leave it to discretion if the commission so desires, leave it to discretion of the applicant if they want to put bumper blocks in there or not, if they feel it would be a better safety situation for their situat, you know, their particular clientele, I don't know. I wouldn't necessarily make that one of the requirements to eliminate them. Yes?
I think an option would be just widen that walkway another 12 inches from a snow removal perspective and not put bumper blocks. I mean, that's always, that's always, that could potentially...
Yeah, snow removal is a problem.
Snow removal around bumper blocks, so it would be a cleaner design to just widen it another 12 inches or 16 inches.
Is that, is that, is that doable within your, all your dimension requirements for parking? Another foot?
I'll let Greg respond to that. You know, as, from Panera's standpoint, I'm not concerned of losing the bumper blocks. I think we would still install some form of blockage like bollards, because that is primarily storefront, and we wouldn't want somebody to accidentally jump the curb and drive straight on through. We're creating drive-throughs, not drive-ins.
Yeah, I know.
I want some of the protection, but, you know, I think the wheel stops may be, I have no issue with them going away, and Greg and I spoke with that, about that earlier, about it being, you know, plowing concern, potential tripping hazard as well, so as long as we've got the dimension clearance, I don't have any concern with removing them.
Yeah, I mean, it's typical, we do that a lot with, we have seven-foot walk, usually allows for two-foot overhang. You know, if you prefer to see bollards, we could, we could put bollards in the edge of the walk, it wouldn't be in parking spaces if you prefer to see those versions of bumper blocks.
Well, would you prefer to have bollards there for safety reasons?
I personally would, yes.
Okay, well, we put your discretion to handle, it's, we are within guidelines regardless without the bumpers, so without, without bumpers, if you want to include the bollards, that would be fine?
Okay.
It's, we can have that, we make sure that, we want to ensure the engineering is okay with whatever space they go with, so.
Oh, yeah, 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 I understand. Any other questions, comments from the commission? Nope?
For Mr. Carlisle. So along 14 Mile and the parking lot, there's also Starbucks, Culvers, there's Krispy Cream. So I understand this meets the requirement of GB, it's not Big Beaver District, but in providing that consistency with those other businesses there, I'm just kind of looking at this south elevation and wondering, you know, we have all those other businesses that I just mentioned there with all the south-facing windows, and this one here is going to stick out like a sore thumb without, without one single window on the south elevation, so.
Yeah, that's, that's one of the reasons we're recommending postponement to allow the applicant to address that, resubmit elevations for planning commission review.
I just want to ask the applicant, is there, is there any reason you couldn't put windows on that side because it's a kitchen or something else?
Right, so that backside is primarily office and coolers and freezers, so we certainly want to go clear and transparent, but, you know, spandrel would be an option, just opaque glass that basically acts like a window for visibility or for, I guess, visual aspects, but not a true window into the back of house area.
What do you think, John?
Well, as I was coming here tonight and driving, because of the big John R. wattles, I came around on Big Beaver. If you remember the Lazy Boy store, and the two wings on each side have a glass like that, an opaque glass, and it, I mean, it just looks dark and, you know, I mean, it just, it's not very attractive. It's not, you know, the transparency that we're trying to achieve or accomplish. So I have some, I have some concerns about it.
Anything else? If not, do we have a resolution? Oh, it's a public hearing, isn't it?
Yes.
So I have to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, close the public hearing. Resolution from the commission?
Page the resolution.
Chair, have a question.
Sure, go ahead, John.
There is a, there is a number of, eight items.
Yeah.
If we were to approve this, it would be contingent upon the approval, but since we're postponing it, does anything have to be said about those eight items? Obviously, the eight items about the elevations themselves. Is there any other changes that, I guess, staff or Ben, you feel are important to be cited in the postponement, so that when it does come back, it includes these items or whatever ones?
I feel like we had good discussion on all of them. The one that I didn't feel we got direction or the applicant didn't get direction was on that, that sidewalk along the western property line. Is that something that the planning commission is okay with the applicant keeping? Other than that, I would, I would think we should include all of the other items you'd like to have addressed to come back. And if, for the bumper blocks, you could say up to discretion between the applicant and the engineering department to figure out, we can, we can move on that.
So do you want to be a little bit specific about the transparency or on that, so that when it comes back?
There's no transparency requirement, so it could be a requirement, but there are design standards, so I would say, I would say that we should elevate...
Request to the applicant, that if they can, because I understand that there are some functional reasons why they did not do it to begin with. Maybe some relocation of the kitchen and, so that is there is a door or something, you know, that they can put, so it looks better, so.
Yeah, so there's, there's two issues with the elevations. First is the amount of EFS, the use of EFS, the applicant has clearly addressed that, that they will come back with elevations that remove EFS.
Yeah.
The second is the issue of that south elevation. The applicant was here tonight, heard the concerns obviously of the planning commission. I think we should leave it up to their design team to come back with elevations that they think meets the design requirements and that could be approved by the planning commission. So I don't think you need to be specific in terms of what you're actually looking for.
Okay, but listen, you got the message right.
So we're still just to the sidewalk issue?
Yeah.
What's your thought?
Well, my thought is, I'm not an architect and I'm not a planning director or a consultant. I'm a lawyer, and the sidewalk, you know, if, if the city planning department is recommending eliminating the sidewalk, I'm inclined to give deference to the people that do this as their job, but at the same time, you know, if you need something for your employees to walk on out to the trash area, that kind of makes... to walk on out to the trash area, that kind of makes sense too. So, I'm, I'm waiting to get a little more information so that I can make a, a more informed decision.
Any other thoughts on the site, Mark? Go ahead.
I'm looking at the site plan and maybe another option would be to actually come out on the south and go along the east side. But then that would have to use that and cross the main drive aisle, and that wouldn't be as safe as what's being proposed. So, I mean, with the applicant...
The only, the only option, they have to now cross the drive-through here to which visibility. It's, I think your, your safety concerns potentially either way. It's just, it's just more impervious that may not be necessary.
Or maybe just eliminate, so go along the, the east side, come out back along the front of, right there where we were talking of putting in the bollards, and then leave that remaining walk heading north. So, eliminate that portion of the walkway from there heading south. I mean, that, that might be an option, but I don't know. To, to eliminate that safety issue of crossing that drive-through aisle, that, that would do.
They're going to cross traffic no matter what you do to get to that dumpster.
Right, so they would cross the driveway at a different location, maybe better visibility or, I mean, the visibility still, you know, I'm looking at that location of the crosswalk where it's being proposed now. And if that, if there's, what I'm seeing there is landscaping, that's almost like a blind corner. Vehicles right, right there on the site.
Unless the landscaping's only four foot high.
Right.
Not to micromanage the site plan, but we try to eliminate situations such as this. We don't want people crossing right the terminus of a drive-through lane.
Yeah.
Is there, I mean, we've seen internal trash enclosure, closures in buildings before. Is there a way to, to move the dumpster? If you moved the dumpster somehow closer to the building or made it internal, then you wouldn't, no one would have to walk that far at all?
Can the dumpsters be moved in the northeast corner? Is that, is that a possibility? Until they're right there?
You're still crossing, I mean, either way.
Still crossing, but they're not really crossing the...
We drive-through aisle. We've got thousands of sites where trap, people have to cross a parking lot to a trash enclosure.
Right.
So, we're just trying to find ways to minimize hazard issues and impervious service worries.
Yeah, I, I kind of agree with Ben on that, that lower, the southwest corner, because after they get their order, the, the customer gets their order, they start accelerating. So, really, there's, there's a curve they've got. They're not accelerating at any great speed, but they're, they're thinking of going as opposed to stopping at that point. So, I could see a pedestrian or employee slash car conflict there at that point. I agree. I, I'd like to see a better solution. Maybe leave it to the applicant to figure that out.
It could be, they're going back anyways. That could be a recommendation for them to consider to come back with.
Any other thoughts before we, someone jumps in for a resolution? Anybody want to make a resolution?
What page is that? 12? 12. Page 7. Someone read that?
I think so.
Are you kidding me? I will read it then. I will need help. I will read it. And do I start with resolved? I never do this. Okay. All righty then. Resolved. That special use approval and preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Articles 8 and 9 of the zoning ordinance, as requested for the proposed Panera restaurant with drive-through located on the north side of 14 Mile, west of John R., Section 35, currently zone GB, general business district. When we're saying be granted, because we've got a, we've got a proposal for postponement, be granted, no, be postponed, subject to the applicant...
Resubmitting.
Resubmitting the following. Number one, remove the bumper blocks and place with bollards as approved with the city engineering department. Number two, provide directional signage details. Number three, rework the sidewalk along Western Property Line to provide better safety or consider moving the trash enclosure. Number four, provide trash enclosure screening details. Number five, add self-closing hinges to trash enclosure gate. Number six, provide light fixture details. Number seven, indicate that the lights are to be turned off or reduced in intensity between 11:00 PM and sunrise. Number eight, resubmit revised elevations with the use of an alternative material for the EFIS.
Give a second.
Go ahead.
Some discussion.
Oh, yeah, but now, yeah, discussion.
That last item, I think we need to, and not only the alternate for the EFIS, but the enhancement of the south elevation as a primary elevation of this project.
Number eight, resubmit revised elevations with the use of an alternative material for the EFIS and include enhanced elevation options for the south elevation along 14 Mile Road to comply with design seat standards found in the City of Troy ordinances.
Second?
Second.
Ms. Ball?
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Grant?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Ramon?
Yes.
Mr. Tagle?
Yes.
Mr. Apidian?
Yes.
Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Moving on to item number six. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, before you proceed any further, I want to disclose, I've discussed this with the Assistant City Attorney, but I'm a patient of one of the doctors with Michiganist through urology, so I have a financial stake in this, but I just wanted the commission to be aware of that. So, if you feel I have a conflict of interest, I can excuse myself.
I don't feel you have a conflict.
I think I have the same situation.
And we, we'll...
I know, no.
We'll let you have your privacy there. Okay, number six, preliminary site plan review, file number SP2019-0018, proposed MIU Surgery Center, north side of Town Center, west of Libranoi, 130, Town Center, Section 21, Zone O, Office.
Thank you and good evening. The applicant tonight is MIU. They are requesting approval to put a approximately 10,000 square foot addition to their existing building on Town Center Drive. At full buildout, the total building area will be approximately 60,000 square feet and will include 278 parking spaces. In addition to the addition, they are making significant site improvements, including an addition, additional landscaping within the parking lot area, as well as a very nice pedestrian plaza area adjacent to the building. For background, the site is split zoning with O and P zoning. O, P is parking, O is office parking, or office zoning. They have single-family to the north. They have office and residential to the east, and they have office to the west, and they have community center to the south. With regards to site arrangement, this is Town Center Drive. There are two points of access that will remain off Town Center Drive, so there's no changes to site access. The existing building here is outlined in gray. The yellow is a 10,000 square foot addition, it's a one-story addition. You'll notice that the existing building is a two-story, a two-story building with a one-story addition proposed. And primary site circulation will remain as is. With regards to parking, the site is currently significantly overparked by our current ordinance standards. It was done under a previous zoning ordinance, and so it is, is well overparked for what ordinance requires. With the addition, they are removing a total net of 50 spaces from the site. So, by ordinance requirements, they are three spaces short of the required 281 spaces. That is approximately 1.1% of the total required parking. We did not ask the applicant to provide a parking study. We are comfortable with the deviation of three spaces. However, if the planning commission desires, they can request additional information from the applicant to confirm that parking is sufficient. The applicant, as I noted, is, is adding additional landscaping, including greenbelt, and they are including a significant amount of landscaped islands within the parking lot. If you look at the site now, there is no landscaping at all within the parking lot. So, all those red dots indicate additional landscaping within the parking lot. We do note the applicant overall is deficient of the 20% open space requirement. However, it appears that they are significantly over what is currently provided, so we are asking the applicant to confirm that with a calculation. With regards to lighting, the applicant is proposing eight additional lights. The application does meet all the photometric requirements, and the fixtures themselves also do meet the ordinance requirements in there in the packet for your review. The applicant's proposed, proposed significant facade improvements to the, to all four sides of the building. This is the elevation facing Town Center Drive, the existing building, with some new facade improvements. We do note that the architecture is contemporary with the use of metal and glass, and it provides some nice changes with horizontal and vertical elements. Again, this is the elevation facing Town Center. This is the east elevation of the building. You can see the addition is located in this area. This is the parking lot elevation, so the addition is located in this area. Lastly, that's the west elevation. This shows the addition in this location from the parking lot. This is Town Center Drive in this location behind. We are recommending approval with the conditions that the applicant provide, two bicycle parking spaces and provide a landscape calculation to confirm compliance. Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Carlisle? Then, we'd like the applicant to step up and describe their program, your project in order.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Vitale. I'm with the firm Stuckey and Vitale Architects. And Mr. Carlisle's done a great job of introducing the project, and I'll just sort of reinforce exactly what he's saying. So, Michigan Institute of Urology is planning on building a, a surgery center at this location. They currently have a small surgery center there, so this will be a significant expansion of a surgery center. So, the existing building, we will utilize about 8,000 square feet of the existing building with an additional 10,000 square foot addition, which will encompass the first-floor surgery center. So, we feel pretty good about the parking situation, because surgery center will primarily involve a lot of large-scale ORs and procedure rooms. So, the patient density is not increasing with the, the use that we're proposing in this building. So, we feel very comfortable with the parking deviation. We probably will have a less intense situation than we actually have now, because what's moved out of the building was a medical office practice, and that is the space that's being replaced by this surgery center. I think we're doing a pretty extensive renovation of that building. We're providing a complete new skin and new glass around the exterior of the building, so it's a pretty significant investment in this property. The Michigan Institute of Urology likes the location. They want to remain in that location and has decided to make a pretty significant investment in that particular building. And I, I think we have some very nice, long-lasting materials that we're proposing. The, the building will be, you know, a metal-skinned building. We're replacing the glass. We're utilizing some other products, including Nietzsche Ha in some areas of the building as well. So, we, I think we have a nice mixture of materials and textures. We like the color scheme. We have a little, a little color with the blue that emphasizes the logo colors of the Michigan Institute of Urology. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. We have no issue with adding the additional bike parking. In, in addition, that, we, we did check and work the calculation with the hardscape and the additional landscaping that we, we, we know we meet the, the 18% landscaping requirement. So, we, we can verify that with Mr. Carlisle. So, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions.
Any questions for the applicant? Ms. Cruz?
What are the hours of operation?
I have one of the owner's representatives here. I think primarily they're, what, six in the morning till six or seven at night?
I'm sorry?
The hours of operation, hours of operation.
I don't know the exact hour, but I know they start pretty early in the morning for surgeries, for, obviously for people who aren't able to eat or drink beforehand. So, I'm guessing that it's around 5:00 AM of when they start surgeries or start admitting people. And, and then usually by four o'clock, it, it's usually they've had the last of the surgeries.
Any other questions? Anything at all? Well, I just want to say, I think it's incredibly great improvement. You know, you've got EFIS, basically the whole building is EFIS right now, so you're going to eliminate that visually, and that's, that's a tremendous asset to the building itself. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I, I have a couple. I do have a couple more questions. I'm, Ben, can you show me where the trash dumpsters are? Okay, so the trash dumpsters are right along that north wall that separates the parking lot from the homes in the subdivision to the north, right? So, what that means to me is when your trucks come in to get the trash, those people that live in the house right where your dumpsters are may be awakened extremely early in the morning with the clinging and the banging of the trucks rolling in there and picking up the dumpsters. Is there a way that that can be moved?
Well, we, we, currently, that's the current location of the dumpsters, as you mentioned.
Well, let me stop you there with that, because I have driven up and down Town Center, Town Center Drive more times than, than I can count. And I have, did not literally pulled into the drive, pulled into the parking lot where there are several dumpsters sort of shoved up against that wall. And one time, literally took pictures of what I saw because I was so horrified at the state of trash spilling out and the disarray of the dumpsters and just the general visual, I'm just going to call it disgust at, at what I saw. And the fact that there are homes behind that wall, I now have an opportunity to make a change, because you're asking for a project. And so, I'm, I'm just telling you, from where I'm sitting, the trash situation is unacceptable. It's going to have to change. You, you can't wake people up at 5:00 AM in the morning who don't otherwise have to get up because you've shoved the dumpsters in that corner right up against their home.
Well, go ahead.
So, we have the same...
Could you please go to the microphone?
I'm a representative of MIU. We have a contract with the same trash company...
We have a contract with the same trash company, not only at the Troy location, but several other locations. So we have obviously a little bit more pull with them, and we'd be happy to say to them, you need to have it later on as far as the pickups go, and that way we can coordinate it to be not obviously necessarily first thing in the morning, but later on in the morning. So that we can take care of. As far as the dumpster goes, yes, we do acknowledge that we've changed companies in the last six or seven months, and there were several dumpsters because the prior company didn't pick up their dumpsters when they were supposed to, and they just left them there. So since then, we've had them taken out of there, and currently we have two there from the same company. And I think the situation's improved over what it was before because I do acknowledge that the prior company left their dumpsters there for many months, even after multiple calls from us to get them out of there, they still left them there, but they're now gone. But we can absolutely coordinate with the new sanitation company to not have the pickups happen before whatever time we need to have them happen.
Could you state your name for a recording secretary? Your name?
State your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Michael Pulcinin. It's P-U-L-C-I-N-I, and I'm the real estate manager for MIU.
Got a question for, are there enclosures required for these kind of trash containers?
Yeah, they, they provide the elevations.
Okay, they did.
It's a masonry to match the.
Thank you.
Material buildings. Can I add one point?
Yeah, absolutely.
So, John, your, your plan showed actually two locations for trash enclosures. It showed they maintain the existing one, you showed a second one in this location. Is that?
Yes, we're proposing two dumpsters, but we're willing to work with the, with the, you know, planning department if they'd rather consolidate that.
Could you move this one to make the area over there slightly larger?
We could. We could do that.
I think that's a fabulous, then it solves all of the residential issues.
Yeah, so, so you're proposing moving it where is your?
Where you just make this, you have got one large one here, just make it a larger accommodate all your needs.
Listen to that.
And eliminate the other one.
Where would you want to move it to as an?
You have, you're proposing one along this property line, so you'd either expand it, or, you know, you expand it if need be and eliminate the one that's, that's currently proposed in the corner.
We would be open to, the reason why we have it there is because a lot of the traffic that we get is on the west side of the property. That's where the, a lot of the parking is concentrated, so that's why we have the dumpster on the east side is because of, there's not as much traffic with the surgery center. So we can clean up where it is now, but our preference would be to leave it the way it is because on any given day, most of the parking happens on the east side of the property.
Let me ask you this, for people that are coming in for procedures, do you not have a circular area where they're going to be picked up and dropped off?
Yes.
Okay, so, so you, the people who are actually going to be tortured that day aren't going to have to park their car and walk into the building. They're going to be picked up and dropped off. So what you're talking about then is accommodating someone who's driving a patient to the facility and, and telling me that it's far more important that the person who's going to be there for two hours while their family member has a procedure is more important than the people that are living, living in homes behind that wall where that dumpster is? That's what, that is what I'm hearing when you tell me that you don't want to put it where people have to park.
We are trying to accommodate as best we can. I mean, in all cases, we're trying to accommodate, obviously, everybody, we want to be very accommodating in, in all of our cases here. What we're trying to do is, I agree with you, we're trying to, we're dropping people off there. On the east side of the property is where a lot of our patients go that are handicapped and are typically elderly, and that's where a lot of the parking is taken up right now. Is mostly, if you go there on a given day, on the east side is where most of the parking happens, and that's.
Isn't that where the dumpster is in the northeast corner?
The northeast corner is correct.
So I'm just moving there on the west. So move it to, move it to the west.
On the west side is where the surgery center is, so people are being dropped off early in the morning for their surgery. But on the east side is where the urology practices are, where a lot of our elderly and handicap patients are also being seen by the physicians.
I want to interject one thing. You know, what, what about the, the lower, in this case, the lower right-hand corner? That would be the southeast corner. You know, you've got a straight drive-in from, you know, that drive, the guy has to turn right, the dumpster guy, the truck picking up the dumpster, he'd drive straight into those, one of those parking, or two of those parking spots on the lower, the very southern end, pick up his trash container and, you know, be out of there far away from the residents. You know, you're closer to the road, so, you know, you're not annoying, why not that?
Right there in the south?
Yeah, southeast corner. Not a lot of parking there. Yeah, why don't we move it from the, the northeast down to the southeast corner?
Do you want to see that?
That would be a problem for us because there's not a lot of parking there.
There you go.
But I don't know if the new development there with the apartment complexes will have an issue with that.
Well, yeah, they got residents there too.
I think, I think from a site perspective, I think potentially.
Yeah, that's the best.
How many spots we need? Two additional spot, right?
If you look at their site plan, that's called to be a transformer, not a trash enclosure.
You know, the transformer, I think, is right in here, John.
All right. I'm looking at sheet 49.
John, is that a trash enclosure or transformer?
Transformer. You're, you're talking about on the other side?
Yeah, it says, your landscape plan puts it as a trash enclosure.
I know, it says relocated transformer.
There is a transformer on that property line, and we also have, yeah, so really the trash, originally the trash is shown on the upper right-hand corner. So I think that if it was mislegaled on the landscape plan, that is really a transformer on that.
That's trans, so that's not, okay.
It's not trash, yeah. So, but it sounds like we'd be open to moving it to the, to the lower right-hand corner.
Southeast corner.
Southeast corner.
Yeah, Amber Apartments.
Now, we are proposing a new enclosure, so that, hopefully that would help screen the dumpster. And as Michael pointed out, I mean, we certainly could work with the, with the company on pickup times and, and make sure that they're more regulated and, and a much better time. I mean, that's something.
I, I think that that's, that's noble on your part to indicate that you would, you would talk to the pickup or the trash company, but we have, in our experience, had other people roll through here complaining about the noise from trash pickup and dumpsters from, you know, office buildings that are adjacent to residential areas, and, and just because you call and you request it doesn't mean that they listen and, and they, they do it. So it's, it's not an airtight solution to, to the issue.
Well, I, I, I guess what I could offer is with the orange permission, that we could meet with the planner, investigate that other area, and see if that, if that seems to be a more accommodating location. We'd be open to looking at that.
What location are you speaking about?
The one you suggested.
Well, yeah, but that's Amber, I forgot, Amber Apartments are right there too, so there's another residence that we're going to be.
Right.
Well, help me understand why it matters if the trash enclosure is next to Amber Apartments.
We know the answer.
I, I, I mean, my concern was if you put it on the southeast corner, is that you might see it from Town Center Drive, and that's not, that bothers me more than it being next to the apartment.
And then why can't it be by the transformer?
Yeah, or right at the transformer. Have a transformer. Can a truck make that turn, that radius with, with the lift, with the forklift and all that stuff? That's a tight, tight area.
Yeah.
To make a 90-degree turn. I don't think it's possible for most of the trucks.
With the car parking lot layout, right, but that can be changed as well.
Well, you got, the building is already there on that side, so it's, it kind of squeezes that side of the, yes, John?
Mr. Fring.
Yes.
If a stipulation was put in the resolution about the time that trash could be picked up, I mean, this is a site plan review approval, what enforcement is there for that? I mean, it's not like, I mean, it's, it's not like somebody can go out and say, well, did they put this in the right spot, or is it the right type of tree? It's, it's more an operational thing. Is that even enforceable?
This would be difficult to enforce.
And it would have to really come from a complaint of a neighbor saying?
Right. And then it sounds like they're, well, they're willing to accommodate, but in terms of enforcing, there's nothing, there's not much the city can do.
I, I, I can offer this, I mean, to that, to that degree, and I know I've had, worked with dumpster companies, and we, we could make that a contractual agreement with that, with that pickup company. Or I think the owner's willing to, to go whatever length to make that, that contract enforceable in terms of when they pick up.
I do know that our contract with this company is actually up in August, so I would be, I would have no problem saying to them as a part of the renewal of the contract that for the dumpster in Troy, that it has to be after whatever hour we stipulate, and we say we can't have pickups before that. I don't have any problem putting that into an agreement.
That sounds reasonable. Do those dumpsters have plastic lids that don't bang like metal ones?
They're, they're plastic, yes.
Thanks.
And did I hear you say you're going to put a maze, just a wall around the dumpster, and that it's an open, otherwise open top?
Top, yes. So it allows the, the trucks to pick up the trash, but it's, it would be closed down also.
And what about the gates? Is there a gate?
There's a gate as well, yes.
And how does the gate open and shut manually?
Yes.
So the, does the driver then have to get in and out of the truck to shut the gate?
Yes.
Would you be willing to look at self-hinged, self-hinging gates like we talked about in the project beforehand?
Absolutely. I, I, we could look at that, for sure.
Any other comments?
Go ahead, Mr. Fring.
I guess I'm kind of asking something very specific, but what kind of waste goes in these dumpsters considering that it's right by residential neighborhood?
Anything that's probably not biohazardous. I mean, they have to do, they have to have special pickup.
Is that separated?
Same things that you and, yeah.
Okay, so typical waste, biohazardous, removed off of site.
Internally, is actually internal inside the building and is removed by a separate.
Okay.
Good question.
Well, I'm not crazy, I'm not crazy about the dumpster being right up against, I mean, have they been right up against? There have, there have been complaints.
To the council?
To who?
Are you aware?
I, I'm not, I'm not aware of any, but that doesn't mean, I, I don't force things such as that, so I wouldn't be the one to know about it.
Oh, I have one other question about the light fixtures along the north wall. Again, just want to make sure that those neighbors aren't enjoying daylight when it's time to go 90.
Yeah, the, the, I think the photometrics will show that we're pretty close to zero at the property line, and those fixtures will be shielded against the neighborhood as well.
And what is the purpose of, of having the lights along that north property wall? I mean, you're not storing inventory in the parking lot, and when you're closed, there shouldn't, it should just be empty.
Yeah, the lights are not on the wall. The lights are actually in the center of that parking lot there, where the circles are. So they're away from the wall.
This is the wall of Karen?
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
Internal apartment.
So they're, they're about 60 feet away.
Okay, okay.
So they're pretty far away.
All right, I'm breathing a little better now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, we read for, okay.
Can you go to the north elevation and the west elevation? For the north elevation, are those the correct number of trees and?
They might not be. The landscape plan was developed after, so I apologize for that, before, the rendering was done, it's conceptual before, so it's not necessarily coordinated, so.
Oh, but what, what is the reason for the trees there, just for privacy?
Well, they, there might not be trees because as we developed and worked with the city on the hardscape, actually a lot of what's in front of the, of that area now is that hardscape paver plant, so there, I don't think there's that many trees in front of the building.
Thank you.
Some mold of landscaping perhaps, but not trees.
Any other thoughts before we go to a resolution?
Probably need to open public hearing.
It's not, it's okay.
We do have a question, I'll.
Sure.
The main concern with not moving that trash enclosure to the southeast corner was the Amber Apartments, is that the primary concern, or was it the appearance of, of it being so close to Town Center?
I'll let Ms. Cruz answer that one.
You know, I, I, I know the site well. I mean, I know right where the building is. I'm not sure exactly where you would put it on that southeast corner, so, I mean, we talk about the southeast corner, but that's rather vague.
Well, it would be in the corner.
Exactly. I mean, if it was far enough away from.
If I, if I, if I may?
Yeah.
I, I agree with your earlier comment that, and this is just aesthetically, I, I think that if, if I may, I mean, putting it closer to the road, to me aesthetically, would, would probably be the right decision. I think managing the dumpster where it is now is probably a better alternative. I mean, because if you put a dumpster right on the road, I don't think that's, that's really the right solution.
It's not really.
Yeah, I'm sorry, it really.
It's not really the, the look that we want.
Right.
For, for the civic center area. I mean, we have the skate park for that.
Yeah.
On that parking lot where we store all of the construction equipment.
Yeah, right.
Right, yeah, we have, we have that.
Yeah.
We don't need a dumpster.
We don't, we don't need a dumpster. So that, I, I agree with your earlier comment on that. I, I would rather work on enforcement and making sure we have a proper enclosure.
And a contractual arrangement about pickup times that would.
I think that would be a better.
Not wake up parents and babies and.
Is that the property is a residential?
There's a, there's the apartment complex that we're all well aware of.
On the back side?
Office buildings.
Office buildings?
Yeah, office buildings.
Can we, can we move the dumpster like on the middle of that?
You're moving a few feet south.
A few feet, so that it's, it's not right.
What do you say about the?
I mean, you could, you know, the truck can come in from west to east and have a straight drive-in.
You, you would try to line, try to line up with the drive-aisles so they could pull around and back in.
Yeah.
And not, I would move it up to the applicant.
That should be pretty easy, right, you know?
We're, if it's a condition of, of the planning commission, we're more than willing to work with the applicant in terms of considering an alternative location.
Because I, I, I like your concern, that definitely we should, we have the chance to really improve our design, why not? You know, why don't we just give it a shot, you know?
So if it's feasible?
We could look at that.
Move, move it slightly as far south as you can. Not, I mean, let's say at least, at least within the commercial area.
Sure.
Not the residential.
Not the residential, you know, so.
Yeah, I understand. Yeah, would you keep, keep it away from the apartment complex? We can look at that.
Yeah, if you could have a, you know, the trash truck come in straight into one of those parking spots, you know, farther south, you know, down that, even that front aisle, because they're going to be, if they're going to be there, let's say after 9:00 AM, there's still, there's going to be customers there. Again, I'll, I'll let you help figure that out with your waste contract. Well, ready for a resolution? I want to read that one with the trash thing. Read that one with the trash thing.
One page? I have 40, 44, 40. Honestly, that's the hardest part of the resolution sometimes, finding it.
Very close to the beginning of each item. The 40 is the number. And the page number's on the very top toolbar.
I would like for it to have its own little separate flag. I did the last one, so I'm off the hook.
Someone else.
That's how that works.
Go ahead.
Before I make the resolution, Mr. Carlyle, we don't need item number two on this resolution, then?
I would still like that because it needs to be confirmed.
Yeah, you need some kind of a number three that would address the trash.
Right, right. Staff and...
Can we request the copy of the contract to be put on file as part of the submission for as far as hours of operation?
Julie?
Well, it's really kind of a civil matter at that point because even before, we still wouldn't have the absolute obligation to enforce the contract between MIU and their...
Right, right.
Wismans. Thank you. We can, I mean, they've made the offer to change their contract that's up in August. You can make that, you know, a condition that they enter into a contract that addresses the hours. But I'm not sure we can require that they give us a copy of it because we're not going to be able to enforce it.
Right.
Okay. We can enforce the site plan, but we can't enforce a written document?
It's not our, I mean, it's not our, we're not a party to the contract.
Wasn't part of the submission that makes it part of the documentation?
Okay, Mr. Lambert.
Resolve that preliminary site plan approval pursuant to Article 8 of the zoning ordinance as requested for the proposed MIU Surgery Center located on the north side of Town Center, west of Livernoy, 130 Town Center, Section 21, within the O Office District. Be granted subject to applicant the following. One, provide two bicycle parking spaces. Two, provide additional landscape area or provide current landscape calculation to determine if additional landscape area is required to comply with zoning ordinance. And three, to move the trash receptacle farther south on the site away from the residential areas.
Did you also want to address the hinging?
And number four, to put the self-closing hinges on the trash container.
Trash enclosure. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
The Sarnaking, roll call, please.
Mr. Crenn?
Yes.
Mr. Lambert?
Yes.
Mr. Roman?
Yes.
Mr. Tagel? Mr. Aggedian? Ms. Cruz?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
Yes.
Item is approved.
Thank you very much.
Sure. Next item is public comment for items on the current agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a comment on this item on our current agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on to planning commission comment. I'll start with Mr. Carlyle. Put you in the spot.
Sure. Director Saadat expresses his condolences for not being here tonight. He's actually at a conference. It's nice being the director when there's not very many confidential items on the agenda, so I enjoyed it. The next planning commission meeting, we don't have any action to be taken. I don't know if Brett had told you this yet, but there are going to be two, two items we want to discuss. One is based on Mr. Aggedian's comments with regards to density and housing options in the city. And the second one is a discussion about transitions and how we deal with transition land uses and density and height. So there's going to be two different points of discussion we want some further planning commission feedback on. With regards to the transition, I'm putting that together. My hope is to have it in the packet. I'm going on vacation next week, so it may just be coming to you at the meeting itself. So I apologize. We're going to try, I'll try to get to you in advance, but it may not be possible.
What about hotels?
We're going to talk about those two items at the next planning commission meeting. And that's the plan. We can talk about hotels in the future.
Parking lot item.
Well, it just, it, I mean, the last hotel project we had was hard. It was hard to try and pass a couple because, you know, obviously, we have the concern about saturation.
Yep.
I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yep, yep.
Mr. Fring?
I have nothing, thank you.
Go right around.
No, my comments about skate park and the parking lot where we store construction equipment, I think were...
Good enough.
Yeah, all I had, all I had to say about that.
Sorry.
None, thank you.
Just a couple of items. Number one, a question. Whenever any of these items are on the agenda, is it, does the city automatically put those green signs in front of the property? Or is it some, apply in some cases and not in others?
It's based on certain required, certain requests, like a rezoning gets assigned. Certain site plans do not get assigned.
I didn't see one in front of MIU. That's why I was curious.
On a public hearing?
Not a public hearing, doesn't get assigned.
Same as the notice requirements.
And then the second is a rookie question. We had an email, I think, from Citizen at the last meeting, asking about the order for public comment on items. I guess the comment on items, not on the agenda occurs before we actually pursue business items, but comments on items that were on the agenda occur after those business items. Is there a reason for why we do that in that particular order?
Well, the first note, we, why we have items that are not on the agenda, first, are public comments. And so people can, if they, they can address the planning commission, then they don't have to stay for the items on the agenda. And then for items on the current agenda, typically, the chairman has always allowed people to speak on any item they want to speak on regardless if it is a public hearing or not. So there are plenty of opportunities for people to comment. And then the last one is the reason why we have the public comment for items on the current agenda is after the planning commission has taken action. Allows the people in the audience to also comment on the planning commission action for that decision. So that's the reason why it's in that order.
Yeah, that came from Mr. Vaskowski. I'm sure I'm saying that right. And I didn't quite understand, I didn't understand his request because I think it doesn't make sense to put public comment for items on the agenda before we've had an opportunity to hear from, playing department have, hear from applicant and hear from public comment. So I think it's appropriate the way that it is. I wouldn't recommend any changes.
Both of your comments make sense to me, so.
I'm good. Nothing. I'm good.
I'm done too, so I guess we're all done.